Still 6:59.
Seven o'clock.
6:59, by my...I got 6:59, my iPhone. Oh, seven o'clock. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman John Baptiste.
Here.
Alderman Nguyen.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here, thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, July 12th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. I have a few public announcements. First, I am very sorry to say that Raymond Summers, formerly of the Water and Sewer Department, passed away. Ray began employment with the City of Evanston in January 1987 and retired in February 2008. I appointed Ray to the Mayor's Budget Task Force, and he was very excited to be appointed. And two days later, he called me and wanted to know when his packet was coming. I have never had anyone that I appointed be as enthusiastic and wanting a packet. So we sent him one. As soon as we had them together, he got the first packet. And he will be greatly missed. I would like to thank everyone who helped Saturday night at the YMCA. There was a fire in the ComEd transformer, and the residents, 90 residents, had to be evacuated in the middle of the night. And Evanston's firemen, policemen, the Y-SAT staff, the city staff, Alderman Sean Baptiste, Alderman Rainey, the Red Cross, were all absolutely wonderful. And the CERT volunteers, Citizen Emergency Response Team, I believe is what CERT is, were there and did a brilliant job. They not only recorded who all the residents were, but they recorded their medical needs. And there was a doctor from St. Francis to make sure that everybody's medical needs were met. So it was a very, very well-run operation. And I'd like to thank the members of the Fourth of July Committee who did their usual absolutely fabulous job on the Fourth of July. I have two proclamations. I'm not going to read them, but I did want you to know that the Steel Tour de Trees Day is getting a proclamation because when I called Paul D'Agostino to ask about that organization, he said that our municipal arborist, Mark Younger, was a member of the group and would be stopping at the Evanston Ecology Center on July 18th and for the purpose of memorializing a newly planted tree within the Ladd Arboretum. So they definitely asked for a proclamation, and it is done. And on July 22nd, 2010, it will be Fireman's Park Rededication Day, and I will read the proclamation then. And I hope all of you will come. That concludes my report. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. Let me add to the Mayor's comments regarding our efforts at the YMCA a week ago Saturday. I also want to thank the members of our Parks Recreation Community Services staff for their fine job in dealing with the evacuation of the residents from the Y and the opening of the Robert Crown Center. Really, as the Mayor said, it was a great effort among all members of the city staff. We have several public announcements. As some of you may be aware, Comcast Cable is about to do some fairly substantial changes here in the City of Evanston, and we've asked Frank Duel from Comcast to join us this evening and give an update. Frank, good evening.
Thank you, folks. My name is Frank Duel. I'm the Senior Government Affairs Manager for Comcast in this area. I've been the representative for Evanston since 1999. I've had the privilege to speak to you folks before. We are carrying forth our national initiative, which is called "The World of More." And what it means is, we are taking the portion of the service, expanded basic service, and we're transferring it to digital. And that will allow us then to free up bandwidth and offer more services, more channels, and some more features on all of our services. This is a national initiative, as I mentioned, which we started last year in other areas. We brought it to the Chicago market in August of last year. We staggered it out over our customer base in order not to flood our service capacity. And Evanston's cutoff will be August 3rd. Now, for anyone who has, and this affects only the people who have a television plugged directly into the wall. If you have a television plugged directly into the wall, and you have expanded basic service, which is about the first 100 channels on the system, if you would like to continue to receive all of those 100 channels, you will now need a digital adapter. We are providing three digital devices per household for free. And all you have to do is make accommodations to pick them up. We have been providing this information to all of those customers since October of last year. If you are a person where we know that you don't have any devices in your home, you've received up to 20 notices to this point. If you are a person who has digital devices already, you've received at least five notices, and I appreciate this opportunity to give you a final chance before August 3rd comes. You may call the customer service number at 866-594-1234. You may go onto our website at www.comcast.com, or you may go over to one of our service centers and pick up your devices. The self-install kits are a kit that looks just like this. The little device and all the instructions and all the cables that you need are included in this package. And again, as I mentioned, three devices per household are free. For any additional devices you would like, depending upon how many TVs you have in the home, additional devices are $1.99 a month. And other than that, if you don't care and you would like to just continue to receive basic channels, basic service, which is the first 20 channels on the system, your service will not change. You may still operate your television by having it plugged directly into the wall. But again, if you have that expanded basic service, which is roughly the first 100 channels on the system, you will need a device to continue to receive those, and that's the opportunity to get those devices and continue your service. The first cut on August 3rd will be about half of those expanded basic channels, about 25 channels. The second cut comes 30 days later. So you don't lose all of your expanded basic channels until 30 days pass. And again, we have all of our service assets are ramped up to accommodate this, but we are not launching this until more than 90% of the customers have already done their transition. Remember, we've been working on it since October of last year. We've been doing it all along as we do service calls. And quite frankly, we've already achieved that goal in the City of Evanston. But again, that's just another reminder, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Green, do you have a question?
Yes. With this new service starting cutoff date August 3rd, would that improve the customer service that you now, that we now get? That we will spend anywhere from five to 15 minutes on the phone waiting for someone to give you an answer to your questions?
Depending upon the service question, sir, you know, we will accommodate all of those.
Okay. Second part to that. Will all of your technicians be qualified to do the work that they have to do to come in? Pointing an example, we were without Comcast for about two weeks due to the storm that came through. We had three technicians come in, two canceled our appointments without our knowledge because they said nobody was home, but we were there. Your time waiting for someone to come really impedes on a person's personal time. I know it's a long, long period, but the only thing that they had to do was to switch out the switch on the outside, which the two who came first said we had to reinstall the whole system. Now, will that be an improvement in the quality of the service?
Alderman, just like the services for the city, it's always challenging. We try to accommodate those as well as we can. If you have specific ones, I'd be happy to, you know, talk to you about them and see if I can help. But yes, we're constantly striving to improve and work on all of our service areas.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have a document destruction event coming up. Suzette Robinson, our Director of Public Works, is here to talk about that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Alderman, and City Manager. On July 17th, here at the Civic Center in the parking lot, we will have our annual document destruction event for all Swink area residents, which of course includes Evanston and its neighbors. The document destruction event, the types of documents that will be shredded, and they'll be shredded while you wait, we will have people unloading vehicles so you don't have to move anything, and then the documents will be shredded right on site. Bank statements, medical forms. You don't need to remove staples or paper clips, but if you have binded documents, you do have to remove the binding. Proof of residency will be required, and I mentioned it's from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. So please get here early because we have residents that start lining up at 7:00 a.m. to drive through. The other program that I wanted to mention briefly is the Computer and Electronics Recycling drop-off will also be held this year. What Swink did, they selected three sites. Evanston was fortunate to be a site last year. However, we're not going to be a location this year. But on July 17th also, you can drop off electronics and computer recycling at Glencoe in the Metro Computer Parking Lot, and we'll put all that out on the website and the e-news, August 14th in Wheeling. Another program that they offered just this year is there's a weekly drop-off location for computer electronics, and the most closest one to us would be Morton Grove Public Works. And you can drop off electronics and computers on Wednesday from 1:00 to 3:00, and on Fridays from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, one additional announcement. A very busy weekend coming up here in the City of Evanston. Doug Gainer, our Director of Parks Recreation Community Services, is here to talk about the various events this weekend.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Members of the Council, as a reminder, this weekend, we're going to have the Ethnic Arts Festival. It'll be at Dawes Park. It's from noon to 7:00 p.m., both Saturday and Sunday. We will have over 125 juried artists and over 20 various food vendors of various ethnic backgrounds. And then on Sunday specifically, in addition to the festival, we will be hosting the downtown international cycling race, which we pretty much shut to downtown for, and we expect a huge crowd, and we're hoping for really good weather. So if you're available, we'd love to see you and everyone else come down and partake in the activities.
Thank you. Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
No communications, Madam Mayor.
All right. Next, we have citizen comment. I'm going to call the first three speakers, and if you would each limit your remarks to three minutes, that would be terrific. Joel Freeman, Eric DeRay, and Jason Hayes. And please state your name and address.
My name is Joel Freeman. I live at 2151 Hartree. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, City Manager. I'm here on behalf of the Energy Commission, and as the current Chair, I participated in the, with the franchise negotiating team that had discussions with Commonwealth Edison about the extension to ComEd's franchise with the City of Evanston. I have a letter that I'll distribute. You can take a copy and pass it down. That didn't make it into your packet, so I'm passing it out now. But just briefly, on behalf of the Energy Commission, we do recommend adoption of the ordinance that's on tonight's agenda to extend the franchise agreement with ComEd for five years with an option to renew that agreement at the sole discretion of the city. The Energy Commission has been following ComEd's outage reports, ComEd's standard measures of outage duration, outage frequency, and we feel that over the last three years since the last franchise agreement began, or last franchise extension began, that overall ComEd has improved in most categories that we've been tracking. We also feel that the changes in the electric industry in the next few years are probably not going to be quite as rapid as they have been in the last few years. And we feel those are some of the reasons that justify a longer extension compared to the three years, three-year extensions that have kind of prevailed over the last decade or so. So I just wanted to let you know that the Energy Commission endorses that ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you very much, and please thank everyone on the Energy Commission for all their work.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Eric DeRay, and I'm the ComEd External Affairs Manager, and I'm here twofold, one for the franchise consideration for this upcoming year that we're negotiating, and number two, what I'd like to read to you too is just, as you mentioned earlier at the onset of the meeting, to address the items that happened at the YMCA and subsequent residents and businesses that were impacted by the outage over the Fourth of July. So with that, ComEd certainly committed to providing electric service to all of our customers, and we greatly appreciate the relationship and support of many agencies from the city that assisted ComEd during this event and some of those you had well mentioned at the onset of this meeting. I want to assure you that ComEd was in contact with key city officials, including the fire chief, the city manager, and we provided updates on the event as they unfolded throughout the weekend. On July 3rd, at approximately 4:00 p.m., a power outage occurred on a circuit serving the downtown area encompassing Evanston High School, the Rotary International Building, the King Home, St. Mary's Church, the YMCA, 500 Davis, and the Evanston Place Apartments, Best Western, and 1551 to 1563 Sherman Avenue. ComEd had quickly dispatched to troubleshoot, to restore power to these areas of the community, and upon arrival, ComEd first responders utilized field instrumentation in order to identify the potential location of the failure. Unknown at that time, the field instrumentation provided an inaccurate indication, which precipitated a series of actions in our restoration procedures that resulted in outages to additional customers in Evanston. Upon restoration of many of these customers, another separate incident caused a new power outage at the YMCA at approximately 8:00 p.m. This complicated the troubleshooting efforts already underway to customers that were impacted by the original outage. ComEd continued to troubleshoot and ultimately restored all impacted customers, with the exception of the YMCA, at 2:38 a.m. on July the 4th. The preliminary cause of the outage to the YMCA has been identified as wildlife, and more specifically, there were pigeons that had made contact with the electrical transformer inside the subgrade vault that provides service to the building. ComEd dispatched crews to make repairs and replace the transformer, which was then subsequently completed at 3:30 p.m. on July the 4th. Earlier in the day, at approximately 6:00 a.m. on July the 4th, a third isolated incident occurred, causing a power outage to most of the same area that was impacted by the July 3rd outage. The cause was an equipment failure, specifically a switchgear at 1550 Sherman Avenue. At this time, a complete forensic analysis is underway to determine the cause of this failure. Generators were also placed on site as a contingency measure. However, all customers were stored on that day by 5:00 p.m., and that again was July the 4th. As a follow-up action to ensure there were no latent conditions, on July 5th, ComEd deployed a technical team to the area to perform physical inspections and thermal scanning of various distribution devices, which also included 30 electrical vaults being inspected in the area. To ensure the city has a firm understanding of the outage causes as we understand them today, we also met with the city's Technical Review Group on Friday, July the 9th, to provide a more detailed analysis of the actions that were employed in response to the event, and also to tell them the follow-up, the follow-up actions that would occur. We will notify the city of our findings from the forensic analysis, and any follow-up action items or corrective measures will also be shared as soon as they are available. Once again, I thank you very much for the opportunity to share this information with the City Council, and certainly we will make sure that any additional items that we find are certainly corrected. I thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. My name's Jason Hayes. I'm a resident, 712 Dobson Street, south side of Evanston. I'm here as a representative of Evanston Firefighters Local 742 in reference to the proclamation that you mentioned regarding the rededication of Fireman's Park. We appreciate that the proclamation is going to be taking place. Just to let the citizens of Evanston know, Fireman's Park on the intersection of Maple and Simpson had fallen into disrepair, and this being the 135th anniversary of the Evanston Fire Department, and sadly, the 25th anniversary of the death of one of our own in a fire in 1985, Marty Leone, firefighters in our department took it upon themselves to refurbish and refresh and work diligently to restore this park on July 22nd. We are a little behind in our work because the weather's not been cooperating with us, but we are making great progress. Alderman Holmes, the people in your district there, they're fabulous. We've had great turnout from neighbors helping us out, neighbors providing meals and cold water to the workers. Fireman's Park is very important to us. The marker that is there bears the name of three of our own. Firefighters Craig and Styles, who died in 1905, firefighter Marty Leone, who died 80 years later. It's a solemn occasion. It's a solemn spot. But we also know that it's part of the community, and it is a playground, and it is a place for families. And we are glad to have been able to work with the neighbors to retain both aspects of that park. There's been a tremendous amount of work that's been put out, and we really look forward to seeing you all there on July 22nd at 2:00 in the afternoon. There'll be a full Honor Guard procession. There will be speakers commemorating the park and those who gave the ultimate sacrifice for the citizens of this town. So again, thank you for the proclamation, and we appreciate all of your support in this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Bennett Johnson, Sharon Eckerstall, Betty Esther, and Madeline Decray.
Madam Mayor, City Manager, Members of the Council, I arrive at this podium with a somewhat hoarse voice to talk about a matter which I consider of great import. An incident occurred on July 4th where a 19-year-old man was shot to death on Drudge Avenue. His name was Leslie Calvin. July the 4th, as you know, is our national holiday, and one of the reasons that we do it is because we celebrate our Constitution, which although, when it was passed, gave only rights to men, white men, who owned property, and it wasn't until some years later that black slaves and women were able to get the franchise. But the Bill of Rights was passed, and the First Amendment in the Bill of Rights is right of freedom of speech. And as a member of the fourth estate and advocate for civil liberties, I believe in freedom of speech. However, a statement was made by a member of the council that denigrated and cast the death of this child as vermin, trash, rubbish, something that should be thrown away and discarded, not belonging to our society. Admittedly, to my understanding, the young man was anti, engaged a lot of antisocial activities and was a problem, but he certainly was not a domestic terrorist. When I think of domestic terrorists, I think of Timothy McVeigh. My qualifications as far as understanding juveniles was I was a probation officer for the County of Los Angeles under Carl Holton. I was a classroom teacher on the West Side and South Side of Chicago. I was a community staff member at the Bobby Franks Memorial Center on the West Side, and I dealt with gangs. That's what I did, worked with these young men. And to say in this way that a child who has some future, strike that, had a future, should die like he did and ignore the pain and suffering to his mother, his grandparents, his relatives, indeed to his friend, and as John Donne says, "For whom's bells are toll, that it tolls for all of us when one is lost." So I suggest for remediation that the alderman should apologize to the parents if she hadn't done that so already. She'll apologize to the grandparents, the friends, the relatives, and indeed, she should apologize to the Evanston community because what it says by a public official making this statement, that every Evanstonian agrees with it because no one has said that is wrong. I say it is wrong, but every Evanstonian says it's wrong. We should not treat human beings' life like that. So I'm urging the alderman to do so forthwith. This is not the frontier. We don't believe in cowboys and ninjas. We don't believe in vigilante judges. We don't believe in lynch mobs. This should not be tolerated by all of us. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Eckerstall, 2519 Ashland, candidate for Cook County Assessor in the November election. I'm here again tonight to address the Township Assessor's budget and the proposed 100% increase in the budget. This is definitely not needed to run the office in an efficient manner. Nutria Township is made up of the villages of Glencoe, Wilmette, Winnetka, Kennelworth, and parts of Glenview and Northfield. They have one person in the office who handles the entire township and all the parcels in those villages. As I mentioned before, Niles Township has two part-time women who share one job. I have to admit, there is a lot of downtime in the assessor's office between the appeal time, and there is not normally enough work to keep two people busy all of the time. The part-time person that was in the office several years ago filled in for lunch hours and staff meetings when staff was out of the office. The Mayor's Summer Help Program filled the gap for usually two and a half months, and it gave a high school student summer employment and a firsthand look into the real world of employment. Also, the general assistance area would staff the office with people occasionally for maybe eight to 10 hours a week. This was all free, and I think this is something that should be looked into before the budget is increased. I would hope you do not approve a budget for an increase in staff and dollars before researching these areas, which would be very cost-effective. Why should taxpayers have to spend more when the equalizer is going up and the assessed value of the properties are going up also, which in turn cause an increase in our property taxes? I also want to address the $45,000 that was mentioned on a line item in the township last month. I believe there's more to this line item, and I think you should go a little bit further in checking into it. I know when I was there, a lot of the events that we would attend were included in this. However, from what I understand, this would not violate the ethics ordinance, but I'm not the attorney here, to attend all these events and expense it back. Again, I would like you to consider not increasing the budget by 100% and the staff by 100% and let the money be where it is this year so we can get through the crisis we're right, we're in right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty?
My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2031 Cher Street. Tonight, we will have another ordinance pace, another law here in Evanston, and that one is dealing with public nudity. In many discussion at the Human Service Committee, it got explained, and then it needed further explanation and everything, and it's, to me, it's still not clear. We do hope that people that will be... We do hope that people that will be doing this will not be out there in the public in nudity. It's still not clear as to what will be happening on our beach, which is okay. They not wearing the glue stuff, they out there to have fun. Address the issue that when this ordinance came up, and that was when the policeman had a young man, well, he wasn't young, he was middle-aged, or he was an older man, and they had him and they put him up against the car, they said, "Put your hands up." His pants fell down, and he didn't have on any underpants. And so from that, we jumped from that to an ordinance where the state had an ordinance in that we could have used to enforce, but the time that was spent on that conversation, to me, was a little too much, that it could have been spent on other issues and everything. And I want to take and say that I agree with what Bennett Johnson had to say. He said it very plainly and clearly. We do not need to be despairing people. Once they are gone, they not going to change, so why do we wish to inflict pain on those that are living? If we could not help him when he was alive by talking about him, we sure are not going to help him by talking about him now since he's dead.
Madeline Ducre. Bonnie, did you wish to speak? Thanks. Did you want to?
Thank you, Mary Tisdale. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to sign up, but I just want to make an announcement as Bonnie Wilson is Evanston's Township Assessor. I would like to announce that the mailing for Evanston Township for the reassessment will be mailed to all taxpayers on Thursday, July 15th, in the Cook County Assessor's Office, and the appeals will be open until August the 16th. And the seminar to be held at 7:00 at the Fleetwood Jordan 1655 Foster, and everybody's invited to come. Evanston Township Assessor, I am co-sponsoring this session with Cook County Commissioner Larry Sufferton and Cook County Assessor James Hulahan. This seminar will include general information on the assessment process, avenues for assessment appeals, resources available for verifying and assessing value is fair and accurate, and important property tax exemptions that are available to Cook County residents. As I said before, the deadline for Evanston Township property owners to submit appeals to the Cook County Assessor's Office is August the 16th, so we have 30 days after you get your mailing. Taxpayers are encouraged to bring their assessment notices with them to the seminar, and staff from three official offices will be present to answer individual questions regarding assessment appeals and exemptions. Appointments can be made at my office at the Evanston Township Assessor's Office at 846 Dodge by calling 847-332-2465. Our office hours are from 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. In addition, Larry Sufferton's District Office at 820 Davis Street is open to assist taxpayers in person by appointment, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 to 5:00, and their phone number is 847-864-1209. And questions about the reassessment notice and appeal process can also be directed to the Assessor's Hulahan's Office at 312... Oh, great, I don't have the phone number here. Just call Larry Sufferton's Office or our office, and we'll be happy to help you. And call us to make an appointment after you get this mailing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would also like to speak, I didn't get a chance to sign up during, when you're talking about the Assessor's Budget, if I can do that.
If we have questions, you'll be here and we'll ask them of you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a special order of business, City Manager.
Before...
Madam Mayor. Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Yes, before you leave this segment, I heard the statement by Bennett Johnson. When I first heard it, I didn't hear a distinction made as to who you were addressing, because it sounded like you were raising that criticism to the City Council, because I had not read it, I'm not aware of the statement, but certainly, I don't know whether everybody is under the same kind of... I don't think everybody had made that kind of statement, so I don't want those who are listening to... I don't want those who are listening to think that the City Council in general, that everybody had done that, because I think that would be very insensitive if any one of us had made that.
Could we not name names at this point?
Well, I'm not... What I'm trying to do is, when a statement like that is made and people are listening to it, you know, each one of us is a member on this council, we are members of the City Council, and I don't want, you know, people to think that that's the kind of response that comes from Aldermen who are members of this government. So I just want to make sure that that kind of general criticism is not extended to each and every one of us. So those who are listening, I don't think Bennett was talking about every single person on the council. I don't know who he was talking about, just trying to make a distinction.
Alderman Rainey.
I would certainly like to get a chance to respond. He was talking about me, but he completely mischaracterized what I said. I absolutely never said that anybody was a domestic terrorist, I never said anybody was vermin, trash, or garbage, or any of those other adjectives you used. And you know, Mr. Bennett Johnson, you're laughing. I am so sick and tired of drugs, gangs, shooting, and crime in our community, and I will guarantee you that 99% of the Evanston community is fed up with it also. What I said was, when I was interviewed by some reporter who I had never heard of before, Trouble he has caused in my community, the disruption, the chaos, the cost to the taxpayers, the jeopardy he puts people in. Last thing he did in my community was a shootout at Custer and Howard at 4:00 in the afternoon. Now, you don't read about it in the papers like you read about Chicago, but this young man, poor thing at 19-years-old, was engaged in a shootout at Custer and Howard. I do not believe, even though there are some criminal sympathizers here, I do not believe that 99% of the people in the city of Evanston or the city of Chicago support that kind of activity. This was a young man who at 19-years-old, these are the things I said, 19-years-old, he had 10 arrests since he's been an adult. And he's only 19, for God's sakes. They don't even start counting until after you're 17. Those are the things I said. I never said anything about wanting him dead, I never said anything about his mother, I never said any of those things. What I said was, I feel terrible for his mother, for his father, for his friends, for everybody. Nobody has ever said they wanted him dead, nobody. And I never used many of the words used in that article, but I will tell you, this person was absolute trouble. I made no statements that were not factual, I had police reports, et cetera. We are having a neighborhood meeting tomorrow night to discuss NSP-2, speed humps, and community issues such as this. And it's a South Evanston meeting, and I will stick by every single word I said that has upset you, every single word, and I absolutely will apologize to nobody. The time has come when the criminals and the gangsters in this community need to apologize to everybody else, because let me tell you, they cost us money, tax money, they challenge the safety of the community, they put our law enforcement officers at risk, they burden our hospitals, because very few gunshot victims have Blue Cross Blue Shield. It is just a huge circle of pain and suffering that is caused, and when they start apologizing, I'll start apologizing for being an Alderman who tells the truth, and I will keep telling the truth. And if that bothers you, then I would say you take your social work skills out there and start making a difference in this community. And I am tired of everybody else in this community being blamed for shootings. Those of us who are not involved in shootings are not at fault.
City Manager?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, we have two items under the special order of business. The first is the continued discussion of ordinance number 53010, proposed budget and appropriation ordinance for the town of Evanston for the year ending March 31, 2011. If you recall at your last meeting, the council adopted an ordinance approving a budget that would take the township through the end of July. There were additional questions that were asked of township officials, and I believe one is here this evening, others are not, and so, Madam Mayor, certainly, your staff, city staff is here to help as appropriate, but really, I believe these are questions for the township elected officials and their staff.
Does anyone have any questions about the budget? Alderman Rainey, you'd had some questions about the budget.
I had something akin to an answer. I have more questions on the bills tonight.
Because there's a $100,000 error or some, I just... But I don't think that has to do with the budget, right? Okay, so when we get to the bills, we'll talk about that.
Does anyone have any questions on the budget? Alderman Holmes?
Well, I have the same question or comment that I had before in terms of the deputy assessor, and I understand that it is not within our authority to change the line items of the budget, but bottom line, is that correct? No? I thought we couldn't deal with the line items.
The town fund, we can touch.
Okay, I'm talking about the assessor office. I would like to redo... Isn't that true? I think it is.
When it comes to the budget, we can't touch operations and staffing, but the budget is the only realm of authority that we have.
Right. Well, and the reason why I'm saying that is because I would like to see that reduced by 20,000, I'm talking about bottom line, and the reason why I'm doing that or recommending that, I would want to move that, is that I think that a deputy assessor at part-time would be sufficient with using consultants or hiring, during the reassessment period, extra people, or using extra people from the township or students to help through that, or interns, I should say, to help through that time. But as an ongoing basis, that would put the Assessor's Office with a full-time deputy assistant and a part-time deputy assessor, and along with our regular assessor. So I would like to move that if I could get a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, would you call the roll? Alderman Tandem?
Is there any discussion or response from the assessor?
Oh, yes, there she is.
I would like to make a comment if I can.
Go right ahead.
I have a little speech here that I can...
Well, either make a comment or a speech.
Okay, I'm going to do that. Let me get my glasses on. As I mentioned at the citizen comment, the mailing for the reassessment for Evanston Township will begin next week on Thursday, July 15th until August the 16th. Right now, we have over 125 taxpayers signed up to come into our office and help them with their appeals. I was told from the previous assessor and from other townships that when they are going through a reassessment time, that they have four to five people helping them with their appeals, and right now, we only have Darnell, me, and Joey Coasters, who was an intern from Northwestern. I'm sure that you are aware that the Cook County Commissioner Larry Sufferton has taken a lot of the property tax appeals that should have gone to the Evanston Assessor's Office because of the problems with the previous assessor. My goal when I took office was to help those same taxpayers and have them come to the Assessor's Office to help them with their appeals and exemptions. I believe that... I opened the wrong place. Just, as I mentioned, just one moment, please. That I believe that I have done that. However, the next reassessment is coming up for the area resident, and it remains a problem for the Township Assessor's Office to meet these needs based on current staffing levels and the current lack of funding to remedy this situation. For instance, in the last six months, we have had over 400 residents walk into the office for assistance and 325 others bonus. As you know, I spent almost every day in the Assessor's Office. One main reason is so that I can see what goes on in the office on a daily basis and what I need to do to improve the function of the office. I want to make sure it is more accessible and efficient to the taxpayers. And after being in the office for the last six months, I now feel it is very valuable to have more than one person in the office during the day. It would be helpful to have that person have some background in working for the Cook County Assessor to the Board or the Board of Review. For example, today I received two calls from two different people who wanted to buy a house in Evanston. Both properties have had senior freeze exemptions on them for years. These people wanted to know if they bought the house, what would the assessments be without the senior freeze? This is an example of questions that a deputy assessor could have answered. Besides the permit issue, which took up a lot of my time in the past six months and which I'm happy to say is now resolved, there are still other issues in the office that must be addressed. And I also want to comment on the permit department, that they've been more than helpful in making sure those permits are sent every month to the Cook County Assessor's Office. For instance, files for taxpayers are not filed correctly. There is no follow-up to make sure that the taxpayers have gotten the exemptions for which they have applied. Additionally, there is no website for this office that would allow for the 21st century access by residents to their Township Assessor. Most townships have a website to give the taxpayers up-to-date information on appeals and exemptions. When I ran for office, my goal was to make this office more accessible and efficient and to service the taxpayers of Evanston. It is difficult to meet these needs if the office does not have the sufficient staff to meet these ends. My job is to oversee the office and make sure it is run efficiently. My position as Township Assessor is part-time, not a full-time one, and my time would be better spent out in the public promoting the functions and services of the office and advocating for taxpayers. So with that said, the question was asked by Township Trustees the last time we spoke of the Township budget as to whether I could run a functioning office with only a part-time assistant. The answer is that I would much prefer to have two full-time assistants, thus allowing for this office to serve the public to its fullest capacity and for me to have more time to take serve in a management and advocacy role from which I was elected to better serve the taxpayers of Evanston. So I hope that answers your question.
I hear what you're saying, and I still move that we would have...
Right, well, I had to get it.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm thinking in terms of the taxpayers, in terms of the cost, so I would still move that there would be a deputy assessor, mainly because of the criteria that they would need to answer some of the questions that you'd be able to answer that your deputy assistant cannot handle. Is that correct?
Right. But I also want to make it perfectly clear, Niles Township has two deputy assessors. I just want to make that point, because that was...
And I got that, I got that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, it has been moved and seconded, and... Yes, you can.
Can you distinguish between the role of the current assistant you have? What is his title?
Deputy Assistant Assessor. Deputy Assistant Assessor, yeah. Deputy Assessor Assistant.
He's what? Not a deputy assessor, he's an assistant...
Assistant, right.
To a deputy.
Right, exactly.
Okay, what is... What are the different roles?
I see two people. One... One, the deputy assistant as inputting the permits into the, to the different, to the programs that we have. So we can email those off to the Cook County Assessor's Office. We are now a month behind in this because we were dealing with all the exemptions that were coming in, senior frees, long-term, homeowners exemptions. So he took that time away from inputting the permits into doing that job, into doing other jobs. And also, the real estate transfer declarations have to be inputted into that, into the computer. That's every house that is sold in Evanston has to be, to input all that. I see, and the other person who I feel would, if he has the background as, as working in the Cook County Assessor's Office, to answer the questions that I've been getting about senior freezes, about the house that I just mentioned about, does this house have a senior freeze? There are some technical questions that someone with a background from a Cook County Assessor's Office or with the Board of Review would know how to answer immediately and know how to get into the programs. We have several programs that we need to get into, that we go into from the Cook County Assessor's Office and the Township Office that we, that we work with. So I, and then, my role would be overseeing all this, overseeing my office. I have files that need to be taken care of from 2002 that need to be, the whole system in this office has to be revamped. I also see that there is, there was never any follow-up to the taxpayers to whether or not they ever got their exemptions or not. We don't have any follow-up. I would like to start doing that in my office and making, going to the assessor's, Cook County Assessor's Office and making sure that whether or not the taxpayers got the exemptions that they applied for. So they're all different roles in working in this. I mean, it's, it's things that has never been done before that I want to, would like to do.
Right, I'm just trying to understand, you behind, your assistant to the deputy or assistant deputy has been behind in inputting the permits.
Right.
Because you had to, want, access the information about the permits and stuff. And he's also been tied up, his responsibility is to do the transfer stamps, right? And what else is he?
Well, it's the real estate declaration.
Declaration form?
We get the, we get the sales from the David Orr's office, and then we input them into a computer, that's all the sales of all the properties in Evanston.
So do you expect to stay as busy, for your assistant to stay as busy as he has been?
Yes.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I, because I want to.
And you're, I know, right now, in the short term, you have a lot of needs that need to be met.
Right.
Do you anticipate those needs being constant, or, you know, once you troubleshoot your initial?
Well, I also would like, I do feel that because, as I said, I'm in the office every day seeing the questions that come in. Most other offices have people answering the phone, other township offices. We don't have that. Somebody has to keep answering the phone. I was trying to get some work done today, and I was constantly on the phone answering questions from taxpayers. So that was that, what that person could be doing. And also, as I said, I would like someone to follow up and go through all the files that we have and make sure that all those people that applied for those exemptions receive those exemptions this past six months, or however long, maybe eight months, we could go back. But at this point, this is what I see as, is what I need. And, you know, I, there's a lot of work to be done.
Alderman Rainey?
I'm wondering, are you considering the people temporary or permanent?
No, just two staff people, I'm just permanent.
Temporary or permanent? So, the situation we had before, though, with the other employee that is now suing us, is that high, very high-paid, in my mind, doing absolutely nothing.
Doing absolutely nothing.
Could find nobody at the office, I would say nine out of 10 times you visited there. This was before you.
Right, I understand.
And then, when we took and eliminated that position in the budget, we got sued. So I'm very concerned about adding permanent employees to the assessor's office. And you gave us information about the numerous other assessor's offices around the county. And I was wondering, are those, are those assessors actually assessing, or?
No, I'm talking about Cook County. Cook County, we don't assess, right? No, I'm not talking about, like, New Trier has two deputy assessors, but.
And what do they assess? What is the territory they assess? I mean, they oversee.
In New Trier, the New Trier Township.
But how big is New Trier Township? Is it larger than?
Skokie, Morton Grove.
Numerous other communities, yeah.
But we're, but we are a big township, we're not a small community.
No, no, because we're co-termites.
Right, right.
Alderman Gro, I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey, are you done?
Yeah.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think my, my concerns are similar to Alderman Rainey's, that I'm wary about adding two permanent full-time employees or adding one full-time permanent employee to the one that we already have. Given that, acknowledging that you've been really busy this last six months since you've been on the job, Assessor Wilson, putting the house in order, taking care of things that hadn't been done. I'm wondering, though, what happens once, will you have the need for that extra full-time employee once this big rush to put things in order has passed and you reach cruising speed and you're no longer new to the job, and everybody is much more efficient at that point? And so, it's the adding of a permanent full-time employee that is what I'm concerned about. And I think Alderman Holmes's motion is essentially to add a part-time employee to that position. And I don't doubt our ability to find someone who's qualified to be your deputy on a part-time basis.
I don't know, I haven't sent out the job position yet to anyone because I was waiting to hear what you were going to do with the budget. But I don't know if I'll find anyone that has the background that I'm looking for. I know I have someone that, the background that would, that would do it full-time. You know, this is, this job started six months ago, and I haven't really stopped. I mean, I really have not stopped working. I mean, I've come every day, and every day's a busy day. And I hear what you're saying, and I wish I could hit a crystal ball and say, yes, you know, in three months, it'll all be gone. I mean, everything will slow down. But that hasn't been the case in the six months that I've been assessor. I mean, people are now calling me more than they were calling the Larry Sufferton's office. I think they're now realizing that we are going to be doing a good job in helping them. I mean, people congratulate me, and they say, oh, I'm so glad you're the assessor. So I think they're calling this office more than they had in the past, and I think that's the reason we're so busy.
Great, and I acknowledge that, and I'm grateful to you for taking on the job and, and the steep learning curve that came with it. And, and it's extraordinary public service that you're doing, working much more than the time that you thought you would be, especially in this last six months.
So I, you know, I, I see how busy we are now, and I assume we're going to be the next, busy till the next six months as well, of things that I would like to do.
Yes. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Yes. Which one do you need, you know, in this discussion, you know, you have the assistant, and you, and you are trying to get a full-time deputy assessor. I don't know whether there's, whether you'll find a part-time deputy assessor, I don't know. But if you were allocated the funds to pay for a part-time person for that position, I mean, is it, maybe you could exercise the latitude of trying to make a determination as to whether or not, I mean, I don't want, you know, to impact anybody's job in particular, but if the budget doesn't allow you to have two full-time persons, then.
And I will continue to work, I will, I mean, I will continue.
Figure out how you spend the money for the personnel. Because I don't, you know, we don't have to deal with the line item, but if there's an allocation of X amount of dollars for personnel, then you could figure out, you know, how best to spend it.
You mean best, you mean best to spend it, you mean whether to hire someone or not?
Whether to hire, you know, full-time, which position you would need to hire on a full-time basis.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, I see what you're saying.
No, I mean, which one do you, you need most at this particular?
At this point.
It sounds like one of them is to input information, okay? The other one is somebody to provide leadership in the office.
Right, but the other person can also help with the exemptions and help with, you know, after the appeals process, I believe that they come back and want more information. We have to look to see, in fact, if they got the appeals that they applied for and go through their files, and it just seems like, I can't imagine being without, they're both, they're both needed in the office. And I, and I hear what you're saying, at this point, I, I'm, I know what I'm doing, and I know what my assistant is doing. So it seems like we can't be without one or the other.
Alderman Jean Baptiste, are you done? Alderman Holmes?
I was just going to say, Alderman Jean Baptiste, that's why I made the motion to take $20,000 off the bottom line. Then it's her decision, I would not want to tell her how to run her office, it would be her decision in terms of whether she wanted to keep full-time or part-time. But I, to reduce the budget by $20,000.
You mean, just in general, just the bottom line?
All right, seeing no further lights, it's been moved and seconded that we reduce the budget by $20,000. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey? Alderman Burris? Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes. Someone like to make a motion about the budget?
About what, the general budget? I thought we can.
Move to approve the township budget for the year ending March 31, 2011, for introduction.
Second.
And Madam Chair, members of the Township Board, I believe it would be the introduction of the ordinance 53010 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Was there a second, I'm sorry?
Yes, I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to introduce the ordinance 53010 as amended. Is there any discussion? For introduction, seeing no lights. City clerk?
Alderman Rainey? Alderman Burris? Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes. Next is the City of Evanston 2010 state and federal legislative priorities.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you know, one of the City Council's goals for 2010 is a greater focus on intergovernmental relations. We have for you this evening a brief PowerPoint presentation that goes through some of the work that we have done over the last several months and allows Matt Swankowski, our Intergovernmental Affairs Coordinator, to introduce himself and to propose a revision to the City Council's state and federal legislative priorities. We could go to the next slide. Again, the City Council back in October drafted an Intergovernmental Affairs Agenda, which has been sort of the basis that we have used, thank you, for our work since then. We had a very successful Evanston Day in Springfield on April 29. Between October and that date, Mayor Tisdale and I had an opportunity to visit with our legislative representatives in both Washington and Springfield to, to talk about the needs of the City of Evanston. In May, Matt was hired to be the day-to-day coordinator of our efforts in Intergovernmental Affairs, and the City Council authorized the hiring also during the month of May of a federal lobby firm, Holland and Knight. Next slide. What we have for you this evening is an outline in your agenda packet regarding recommendations for us to focus our energies for the balance of 2010 and into 2011 in order to go after specific grants and earmarks to meet the City Council goals. Certainly, the council and community's needs from Springfield, Washington, and our regional neighbors are great. However, I think it's important that the City Council identify a little bit more specific goals and priorities than the document that you approved back in October. So with that, unless you have any initial questions, I'd like to introduce Matt Swankowski, who will walk through the rest of the presentation. Matt? Matt, I think your microphone's not on.
Try speaking closer to it, sometimes that works.
No.
We've got the portable mic, I think.
Nation.
Thank you. Just to kind of go over where we currently are at and where the October 5th document outlined, there is nine main points, focused in on numerous items, including funding for water distribution, sewers, capital and road projects, funding for public safety and equipment and personnel, affordable housing initiatives, improvements to CTA metro station tracks, viaducts in evidence in Evanston, and pension reform. And while the, while the council outlined a lot of goals we wanted to reach, they're very broad, and so we're coming. We need to focus on as a, as a city, as a council, the first being with Congress, working with our contract lobbyists at Holland and Knight, solidifying our relationships with our congressional representatives. I'm working on, working with the staff at the Illinois General Assembly, keeping key relationships with the staff members of Senator Schoenberg's office, State Representative Gable's office as well, building a strong relationship with RTA, which is the umbrella organization for PACE Metro, keep, conference, building a strong relationship with CMAP. And I'm going to go into all these relationships a little bit further into the, into the, exactly what we're trying to do with each organization. League, National League of Cities, US Conference of Mayors, Matt manages the tracks. Now, what we've, what I've recommended, some overall goals, meaning both state and, what these goals are. First of all, and most importantly, tier one, fall within the sphere of goals and importance outlined by the City Council in the October 5th agenda item. Two, after consultation with our contract lobbyists in Holland and Knight, these are achievable, and in my estimation, achievable with hard work. Now, now, we're not going to get all of them, but if we put forth a very strong presentation, they are achievable. And then, some of these projects or grant opportunities are part of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, and so they won't be here indefinitely, so it's important for us to go after it now. The first program we're going to be going after is $5 million for the Emerson Street project. Authorization for 2000 and, basically 2009 through 2015. The last, um, safety loo was about a 250- What we've, uh, determined by meetings with department officials and, and of course with your approval, is going after some study money for water utility expansion, just planning where we- The, these are all still the overall, uh, federal funding priorities. Going after the, the sustainable, um, communities initiative, these are, uh, grant funding administered by HUD, by EPA, by, um, Department of Transportation. And there's actually two. There's one that's micro in nature, which is the HUD Community Challenge Planning Grant Program. We're gonna be going after a- Is to achieve affordable economic- So this first part- Nature. We're also exploring going after a more regional base and partnering with some of our regional allies. A CTA to go after a sustainable communities regional- This money would be go- At buildings and possibly purchase buildings, but- For the city. It's gonna be- In Pacific. Currently, we really need to refocus our, um, efforts at, at going after some of this money. State of Illinois is a little behind on some of their money owed to CTA, so we're gonna be working with our partners to make sure that money comes to Evanston. Some other federal priorities, we're gonna be applying under the, um, Tiger 2 grant. Tiger 1 was both Tiger- It's gonna be, uh- Street corridors. And when I talk about streetscape, it's not just, uh, resurfacing, it's complete transformation. We're trying to, you know, infuse economic development, bringing sustainability engineering practices within throughout the entire project. The next overall goal is exploring Evanston becoming a weed and seed community. And if, um, weed and seed communities are designated areas, blocks, whatever the, the, the law enforcement community working in concert with the- Come through and weeding out violent criminals, drug offenders, whatever, in that specific area. But then working in concert with- To- Vitalization efforts. These, this money would be anywhere from- Is something we, we need to go after. Some state priorities, um, one of the key outlined agenda- Reform, um, and obviously we've had part of that dealt with. But we really need, we're working on becoming a really good active member with the Northwest Municipal Conference and the Pension Fairness Coalition to really reform police and fire pensions in Springfield. We had a lot of movement at the end of the year, but sadly, we fell short. We're working to get something done this summer, and we believe there's going to be, um, a great effort for the city to play a very key role in those pension, um, public pension, or police and fire pension reform. The second part is, as you know, um, the state budget is, got some very difficult, it's in a difficult state, to say the least. And so we're gonna really have to focus our efforts on protecting, um, our share of state tax revenue during the 2011 state budget process. There's gonna be a lot of changes in Springfield, um, both politically, and so we're gonna really focus our efforts on protecting what Evanston already has. The last state tier one priority, um, would be to be exploring really a state, possibly a federal, but mostly a state earmark for planning associated with an Evanston wet lab. And what a net, a wet lab is designed to do, it brings together scientists and early-stage startups together, encouraging partnerships. It's actually a facility that has, um, key infrastructure that, that the scientists need, including high-speed data access, heavy-duty ventilation, environmental control technology, um, loading docks, furnished laboratories. It would be, um, to go after some funding sources to, to develop, how does Evanston help encourage these burgeoning, uh, nanotech companies in Evanston, and how do we assist with them? And this is one of the, uh, proposed ways. Some, just going over some state, uh, tier two state and federal priorities. During our conversations with Holland and Knight on June 24th, we had them come in and they spoke about a lot of different ways. We met with all the department heads. And one of the things that we really found was interesting was going after some, from transforming not just the libraries, um, transforming libraries, but transforming, adding some programming that might allow us to go after some federal, federal funding. So we're in the process of exploring what that might be, um, how we might do it, what the funding might look like. But that's what, um, what we're gonna be exploring with our federal lobbyists and, and with the, with the libraries here to see if we can add some things that will bring us additional funding. The next, um, priority would be, as laid out in the October 5th memo, was federal funding for Safer Grant Program, which is actually Safer is, stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. These are grant awards going to fire departments, uh, to help increase their, their firefighters. It is a two-year grant program, so it only allocates money for two years. So that is one concern you should, should think about when we're, when we want to pursue this. The, the final, the continued state and federal priorities, um, going after the state, federal funding to apply more renewable energy resources and techniques to municipal buildings. Whether that be more solar power or retrofitting, uh, public municipal buildings with more energy-efficient, uh, construction. There are grants available to do this, um, between 350 and 500,000, uh, depending on what the project. So this is another grant opportunity to, to meet the objectives of the city council. Just a couple more, uh, going after state or federal funding to pay for Evanston-
Excuse me, Madam Alderman Rainey, did you have a question now?
I do have a question, and I, I hate to interrupt you-
Nope, please.
But I won't remember this once you finish with all these fabulous opportunities. This one on renewable energy resources, um, oh, that's at the water utility.
Yeah.
Is there anything, I'm sorry, I, you know what, I, I wasn't paying attention. But what about our HVAC system in this building? For example, our, our heating system is, we have been told for years and years and years that it's absolutely a drain on resources, financial and, and energy. And it, you know, we have to hand make, or we finally found somebody who can construct our heat pumps custom for us. Is there anything that, that would take a huge financial burden off us that would help us with that?
Madam Mayor, Alderman, um, I do not know-
For this building?
For this, I do not know, and I, I will, I can do added research into specifically if those grants will apply to HVAC units. It does have a pretty broad application, but I can definitely get back to you to see if that might be a possible source of funding.
Thinking it's an energy drain on a huge civic property that the taxpayers are, you know, paying-
Right. I, I can definitely, I will get back to you on that. To go back to just the seasonal youth employment, um, the, currently as it stands, there's very little opportunities to go after, uh, funding, but there is a bill currently in Congress that's winding its way through. And so we're gonna be pushing, um, to get this bill passed. And what it does is it's House Resolution 4812. It provides some funding to local governments to maintain, um, seasonal youth employees. There's some provisions in there for urban, um, seasonal youth employees. And then the last, um, overall tier two priority would be just to go after some more state funding for Safe Routes, the school program. For our, for our students to make sure they can walk, take the bike, uh, to get to their, to get to their, uh, schools on safely. And then the last, uh, things I just wanna briefly talk about, which I mentioned earlier, just some regional goals. I think it's very, as the, it's very important for us to be a regional partner and a regional player in a lot of different things. And working with the RTA specifically on federal funding programs for public transit. As it currently stands, um, Congress has always really focused its attention on expanding services in terms of new stations, um, new lines, which is great. But with a aging infrastructure system in the City of Evanston, City of Chicago, we really need to work on reprioritizing some large-scale funding to, uh, repairing the existing systems. Working with CTA on a lot of variety of purple line improvements, secure funding for a total rehab, which is definitely what our number one goal. But then to do some smaller things, work with them on their adopt-a-station program, making sure, from an economic development standpoint, the stations look nice. Working with Uni-Pacific Railroad and Metro to really get the viaducts repaired and viaducts reconstructed. We had a meeting that, in last week about how do we go about doing that? And it's really about getting, um, our face in front of their committees, their boards, to ensure that we are a priority in their next time they do viaduct reconstruction. And my last is just to work with PACE. They, I was just at a PACE board meeting, they're working on their, um, transit priority signaling routes as part of their arterial rapid transit plan. They're working to get it done by 2012, hopefully by 2011. We would really be beneficial to the residents of Evanston because it would provide a, a more direct route via bus out to O'Hare. So we're working on that. And then just going back to Northwestern Municipal Conference, working, making sure that they understand, you know, the, the views of the city council of Evanston when policy decisions are made at the state level. And then working with CMAP in the same capacity, making sure we have a good relationship. So when they're making, um, regional decisions or allocating money, that we are at the table, working with them to, to work on those changes for the, uh, for the people of Evanston. Just in closing, my next steps, I will, uh, continue giving you monthly reports, um, to the council, as you've already seen a couple from me. I continue attending relevant meetings with staff, um, and regional partners. A very important job, develop and coordinate grant and earmark documents and to make sure everything is being run on time and making sure we get things in. And then I will be reporting again, um, in a few months in November to give you some updates on what we've accomplished, what we haven't. Where do we go from here? What are our next priorities? And I, um, will answer any questions.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Swankowski. I know you've been, uh, working hard on this for a while, and you had lots of meetings with our lobbyists and our, and our legislators. And I wonder if you already have a good idea about which of these, specifically the grants, are the low-hanging fruit that we have a good likelihood of getting? Which others, you know, are we gonna be working hard to get? Give me an idea of the level of effort that we'll be applying to each-
Sure.
Part of this plan and-
Absolutely. Um, there are, anything at the federal level, as the, the current administration has really made a push for a very competitive grant process. These, all the, the number one priorities are going to be very difficult, um, but attainable. We are really working hard. I've, uh, we have three concurrent grant applications working right now on both the HUD Community Challenge Grant. I think there's, um, on that grant, there is a, I think we have a very good plan.
How much was that one again?
That is, uh, 2.2.5 million. The Tiger 2 grant is a very large grant. It is a, um, it is a very difficult grant to, um, go after just because it is, there is, uh, about 2,000 people or groups applying for that grant. It'll be a more difficult grant to apply for. Depending on what priorities that the council wants to set, you know, we can allocate resources, um, more so on certain grants. But based on my recommendations, these are ones that are, I believe, attainable.
And what's the timeframe?
Sure.
Is this a, uh-
Yep.
Are these one-year goals, or are some of these things we're putting in place for a payoff perhaps in three years? What's the-
I think there's a little bit of everything. The, some of the grants outlined, um, the Tiger 2, the HUD Challenge Grants, the Regional Planning Grants, these are all part of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, and they are coming up for final applications in August with probably grant awards sometime in early fall. The work doing with, of course, Metra, CTA, um, that has got both, uh, short-term and long-term, I believe, outcomes. We can do good work both the short-term and the long-term. The other, uh, the, like the Safety Lou, which is the major road project, Congress is currently working on that. That's the, the, the first one I outlined. That is gonna probably be finished in either November or early next year. So most of these are within a, a year goal. I mean, some of them have long-term implications as well. But really, I think we should be able to see some results within the next, you know, 12 to 18 months, depending on what the particular goal is.
One last question, if I may, the, um, uh, our regional goals-
Yes.
Will require us to be cooperative, collaborating with some of our neighbors in Chicago. And, uh, are we on the same page as to some of these regional goals? Our goals for the RTA and the CTA and-
Well, I think the, I think the most important part is that we make our, our views known to them. Because I don't think that, um, every community can, has the, um, capability to have a presence there, both the elected officials and, uh, a staff member, to make sure that they understand what our views and goals are, what our needs are as a community. I, so that, that is probably, absolutely, we can, you know, I wanna make sure I get, um, the, all the elected officials and, um, outside of myself to these meetings when it's definitely appropriate.
And, and as to, sometimes though, collaboration with Chicago-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is gonna make things happen better than if we were going alone.
Absolutely.
Who are your counterparts in Chicago or the-
They have, uh, I think, I believe they have nine or 10 collab of my positions.
Governmental Affairs Coordinators?
Yeah, they have, um, the City of Chicago has a tremendous amount. I've been in constant contact. Actually, CTA's been- Actually, CTA's been really good, responsive. As you know, Metra's been pretty responsive so far in some issues. We have, I'm developing working relationships as best I can.
Because sometimes what's good for Chicago is good for Evanston and so forth and...
Absolutely, especially on CTA funding and, and overall funding needs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Shaw-Baptiste?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple items. One, under key relationships for the city of Evanston, I noticed that you didn't mention the water reclamation district. I know you and I have had some discussions about, you know, beginning to think of how we may be able to utilize the North Shore Channel.
Yep.
I think that there's been some evolution in terms of the, the use of the North Shore Channel over time. I understand that some long time ago in Evanston, it was a dumping ground, but it's no longer that. And there's some utility, there's some schools are using it for boating, et cetera, et cetera, but there may be some other usages that we can put the North Shore Channel to that may be able to benefit us and, and generate some revenue. So, you know, I want to make a reference to the city manager to please look into that and see how far we could take it, okay? On the other item I wanted to talk about, in your overall state and federal funding priorities, one of your goals is to go after the $300,000 of study money for water utility expansion. You talk about that some of the recovery money is available during a short period of time. And this study seems to put, you know, the, the pursuit of larger funds on a back burner. Because if we, because we already, in a sense, understand what we want to do. We want to be able to somehow retrofit and, and improve our technology there, maybe expand in order to be able to sell water to more suburbs, more of the surrounding areas. So are you thinking in terms of trying to pursue that objective, to get that done in the short term, to put us in a position to compete for larger money? Can you share with us?
Sure.
You know, a little more of your thinking?
That, the recommendation is to get a study done of what's the best way to go about exactly what you, you talked about accomplishing. How do we really go after, what do we need to do to make those, that transition to selling to different communities? So that's what the, the planning money would be a partial study for. I, I believe that there, the, the problem with the water utility in terms of getting funding for it, there are some very limited federal and state larger grants that you can use for water utility, but there are, there are some that we can go after. There's, but the short and long of it, it's very difficult to, so this would be the plan, but there are very few outlets to go after some, some larger fund allocation for the water utility.
And, and Madam Mayor, Alderman John-Baptiste, if I could just add a little bit on that. The primary funding source for water and sewer work comes from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. And as I think the council's very aware, we've been extraordinarily successful in getting low-interest loans from IEPA for our sewer utility. I think what this report will help us do as we move forward to market water abroad to other communities around us is to access that IEPA money. Recent Chicago Tribune article that many of you I know saw about the links that some communities have gone to politically to get access to IEPA money. We have done the studies, we have gone through the normal routes and have gotten money that far exceeds most other communities to get that money. So by having done our homework, we have discovered that generally carries the day on water and sewer. And as we try to look at our overall state and federal priorities, rather than try to spend a lot of time to get earmarks that communities just are not getting in the areas of water and sewer, we'd rather focus our areas like on the west side of Evanston where that money is available for community development monies, rather than to go after the water and sewer money that just really isn't there.
Okay. Well...
Could I answer that too a little? Alderman Shaw-Baptiste, from the U.S. Conference of Mayors Water Council, the only people in this large group of mayors who had gotten any money for water department had gotten it from the Army Corps of Engineers. And it was a sort of 20-year plan. So I'm going to start a 20-year plan to figure out how to do it, but nothing arrived very quickly from the Army Corps.
Right.
Unless it doesn't look as...
But there's millions of dollars available for community development. The Sustainable Communities Program is the federal government's number-one urban revitalization program. They're bringing together HUD, they're bringing together EPA and the U.S. Department of Transportation. And what project that we are in the beginning stages of, looking at Howard Street, combining efforts with the CTA and with the city of Chicago, working on the west side of Evanston to finish the portion of NSP-2 that was not funded by our initial grant application. There is real money available for all of that. And so we want to, we're recommending to the council this evening that we focus our efforts to go after those projects where that money isn't currently available.
Okay. Well, that's great. I'm just trying to really emphasize the absolute necessity for us to work on, on expanding the options to sell water, to, to try to generate the revenue that we're going to need in, in the long haul and to really give it some priority. The other item I wanted to ask about is page four, Other Federal Priorities. This strategy that you talked about, exploring Evanston, becoming a federal weed and seed And you, I understand the first part, to try to weed out, you know, crime, et cetera, et cetera. And then you talk about seed, trying to bring in kind of human service programs to, to support. Let me make
Sure.
a comment about that, what, how I see it. I think that, you know, really it's about trying to help people stand on their own two feet. I'm concerned as we, I, I fight hard for programs for youth and families, et cetera, et cetera, but not to create dependence. I think we need to really look at what kind of programs we bring in and, and try to steer or shape or characterize these programs in such a way that they try to empower people with work, training, so that folks can, can move forward and, and have a future. I'm concerned about, as we talk about our township and general services, et cetera, et cetera, you know, I understand the safety net is important, but I also understand that it plays a role in, you know, creating some permanent expectations on the part of some folks. I'm more concerned about trying to bring programs in that can assist people in standing on their own two feet and making a transition to, you know, independent kind of existence, okay? So as we move forward, as we look at what's coming in, as we, let's see if we can shape them to reflect, you know, some of those type of values, okay?
And Alderman John-Baptiste, members of the council, the Weed and Seed Program, and I know that Chief Eddington's here and has, he has some experience with this program in other jurisdictions as well, I believe, or certainly is familiar with it. And I think every community I've worked in in the last 20 years has had a very active Weed and Seed Program. It has traditionally been the funding mechanism to do exactly what you're talking about. And for whatever reason, the city of Evanston has not participated in this. I, I don't know if there's been any background, I don't know if Chief Eddington has anything to add on the history here in Evanston, but it has been the, it's sort of the CDBG of the kind of thing, Alderman John-Baptiste, that you're talking about. And for whatever reason, the city of Evanston has not participated in the past. It is access, it's money that's allocated in the Department of Justice budget annually. It's not new money, it's not earmarks, but it's money that helps empower people by also then allowing some additional funds for, for law enforcement in addition to that empowerment. In, in Santa Paula, I was before, there was money available to the Boys and Girls Club to provide after-school training. There was money involved for nonprofits to provide assistance to mothers with children from, from zero to, to three years old, parenting classes, things like that, all about helping people move forward in their lives. So I think certainly, again, Chief Eddington and I both have experience in other communities with Weed and Seed. It makes a lot of sense for Evanston.
Alderman Holmes?
Well, my question was about Weed and Seed as well, in terms of, I wondered, was there any coalition between that and what we've been doing with SEPTED in, in terms of our pilot project that we did on Jackson? I know if the chief might be able to, is there any connection or any kind of correlation with that, Chief Eddington? Because if not, I think it, I'd have some of the same concerns that Alderman Shaw-Baptiste would have.
Thank you, Alderman. In the communities I've worked in before, they want to consider those additional items like SEPTED and other projects to show that it's not solely a law enforcement-focused program,
Right, okay.
but there's quality of life issues considered as a follow-on for the seed part to show that there's a real effort to community improvement in addition to the initial focus on criminality.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Alderman.
Okay. And then the other question I had, Matt dealt with the Safe Routes for Schools. Is there any room in there, in this funding for crossing guards? I mean, can we make a really creative and innovative proposal that could get that covered?
Madam Mayor and Alderman, as I do not know, but I will, I will investigate.
Would you research that?
I will investigate for you.
Just write the grant creatively.
That's it.
All right, that was an excellent report. Thank you very much. I see no further lights.
And Madam Mayor, before you move on, we'd ask the recommended action of the report is the adoption of the revised state and federal legislative priorities as been described this evening.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Alderman Rainey, can we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item on our agenda after the two special orders is approval of the minutes of the special council meeting of June 21, 2010, and the minutes of the regular council meeting of June 28, 2010. The Administration Public Works Committee met tonight, and we recommend your approval of the city payroll through the Fourth of July in the amount of $2,496,698.10. And the bills through July 13 in the amount of $2,869,632.19. The committee reviewed and requests your approval of a one-year contract extension for the purchase of tires and tubes for vehicles and equipment. This is bid 1026 from Wentworth Tire Service in an amount not to exceed $90,000. Request your approval of the contract award for the 2010 alley paving project. There's a corrected bid number of 11-22, and that is in the amount of $259,651.75. And the award was to, let's see, the award was to Accura Inc. in Bensonville. Next is the approval of the award for automotive parts and supplies and accessories to general auto parts for medium and large trucks and to, to, for, for general auto parts for medium and large trucks goes to Aetna Truck Parts in Chicago in the amount of $66,000. And to an Evanston firm, Carquest Auto Parts on Main Street for sedans, vans, and pickups in the amount of $90,000, for a total of $156,000. We request your approval of a community central system for NSP-2 grant management. This is a document management system, and it's a single-source bid, and it's for three years. And the estimated amount for the three years is $125,000 through $130,000. And this money is included in the NSP-2 grant that we received for $18.5 million. Next, we request your approval for the renewal of the printing contract for Recreation and Arts Activities Guide and Highlights Newsletter. We are recommending the award with recycled paper to, to Ripon Printers. They're the same firm we've been using for a second year in the amount of $66,354. We ask your approval for change order number two to the 2009 Water, Main Sewer and Street Improvements Contract to Trine Construction Company. The amount is $20,915.17. We ask that you approve Resolution 4410, R10, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease between the city of Evanston and Norma and Nolan Robinson for the apartment located at 1223 Simpson for a term of one year through August through July 31, 2011, in the amount of 1,300 a month. Next, Ordinance 54010 is for a, the issuance of a Class C liquor license due to the reopening of Pensiero Restaurante. And I'm moving introduction here, and the committee chair will ask for suspension of the rules, if no one minds. Next is A7, which is for action, Ordinance 29010, which authorizes the sale of the surplus fleet vehicles listed owned by the city of Evanston at Obenoff Auction Services Municipal Equipment Auction. For action also is Ordinance 38010, which decreases the number of Class B liquor licenses due to a change in ownership of Bar Louis. A9 is for action also is Ordinance 39010, increasing the number of Class B liquor licenses to permit the issuance to Bar Louis due to the change of ownership. Under Planning and Development, the committee recommends your approval of a sidewalk cafe first time for Starbucks Store Number 2444 at 519 Main Street. The Alderman of the Ward approves of this. And under Human Services, the Township of Evanston monthly bills, we're going to take off the agenda because the executive director's going to explain something that evidently was an error. H2 is Ordinance 35010, which amends Public Safety Title IX, Section 5, General Offenses of the City Code of the City of Evanston, Paragraph 11, Public Nudity, Urinating and Defecating in Public. This is for action. Under Other Committees, item 01 is approval of the Neighborhood Storefront Improvement Program Funds for 1459, 1463 Elmwood Avenue. A recommendation from the Economic Development Committee to do a 50/50 sharing at $17,500. And the money comes from the Economic Development Storefront Improvement Program Funds. 02 is for introduction. This grants an extension until July 14, 2015. This is the ordinance on the franchise. I'm removing this from the agenda. Oh, wait, it's for introduction only.
I was going to request that we suspend the rules.
Oh, no, not, I will not suspend the rules on this. No. I would...
I'm asking, I'm requesting, I'm not...
Okay, but I'm just saying, I, you know what?
We can take it off for consent.
I didn't realize, I didn't realize it was for introduction. If it is only for introduction, I'm not going to remove it.
I'd like to remove it.
Okay, you can remove it. It's removed. Ordinance 03, I mean, item 03, Ordinance 48010, amends the city code to make the city's fiscal year coincide with the calendar, calendar year. This is for action and would begin on January 1. The change would begin on January 1, 2012, after a transitional 10-month fiscal year beginning March 1, 2011. So at the end of this fiscal year, we'll have a short fiscal year and then a full 12-month one after that. And Madam Mayor, that is the end of the...
Hold the minutes, both minutes?
Oh, we're going to hold, we're going to remove the minutes from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I did not hear that before, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't.
So we're going to remove the, so I am moving approval of the consent agenda without the minutes and the, the item... minutes, and the item having to do with the franchise agreement.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Paty's.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Nine.
Nine to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman John Paty's, Administration Public Works.
Do you want to do the agenda first? Do you want to do the agenda first? I mean.
Do the minutes first, yes.
Madam Mayor, I think I misunderstood Alderman Grover. She would like to hold them till our next meeting. Is that correct? Is that what you?
No, 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 no.
Oh, you want to correct them?
Yeah, just correct.
Okay, all right, so it's time to do that now.
Mr. Clerk?
Okay, we, there's some changes in the minutes that need to be corrected before we accept them. The minutes of June 21, under Citizen Comment, the, instead of reading the fallen person spoke, the, I mean, it should be reading, the fallen person spoke on the actuarial report slash firefighters layoffs. Then under that, let me explain some first. Before, anytime the minutes are written, and I'm just going to do this for this time, is that I do not need to do a verbatim report of the minutes. But because there was some question of the minutes, and they felt that they were not being representative of what was stated, I'm doing it for this time. This is not a verbatim report anytime after this. I do a report of what's going on, who's there, and the results of that. But what I'm going to do here is add into Mr. Schoolmaster's statement, it should read so that they could be included rightly once they're approved at the next city council meeting. Any questions? Now leave a. with the addition that he spoke on the actuarial of the Police and Firemen's Pension Fund,
And then if I may, Madam Mayor, on the minutes of June 28, looking at page, sorry,
also that it was on the agenda this evening for action, and there's no reason for it to be adopted tonight. Both boards met with Mr. Lyons early this year to have joint discussion of the actuarial
the top of page five, question, did your group FOIA the library donor excellence list?
report. He also stated that the Blue Ribbon Committee recommended an independent actuarial model
Answer, no, we did not. I think the answer from the floor was, yes, we did.
to be taken every three years. Also, he spoke about the departmental payoffs, pay cuts, where some took smaller pay cuts
Top of page five, it's page 71 of the agenda packet.
than others, and others took adjustments in salary.
Actually, it was, no, we did not, and somebody corrected it. Yes, we did.
But the answer is, yes, we did. So I want the minutes to reflect the answer.
But she clearly didn't.
No.
But the person at the floor wasn't mic'd, so it wasn't picked up when Mr. Green made the. Am I correct?
Yes.
Can we make that change to those minutes?
Laurie said, no, we didn't. I think Mary Johns.
The minutes aren't even that accurate, I mean, as to attribute it to a specific person, I just want the fact to be correct in the minutes. Move to approve the minutes as amended, both the minutes of January 21 and the minutes of June 28, June 21, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Calling the council's attention to item A6, I move suspension of the rules to recommend passage of Ordinance 54-0-10.
Second.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Paty's.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
Ma'am, may I move approval of Ordinance 54-0-10, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses due to the reopening of Pensiero Restaurante?
Second.
All right, it's moved and seconded to suspend the rules. City Clerk, would you call the rules?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Paty's.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Nine to zero. The motion passes.
Ma'am, may I move approval of Ordinance 54-0-10, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses due to the reopening of Pensiero Restaurante?
Second.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Paty's.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Nine to zero. Thank you.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
This completes my report, Madam Mayor.
Next, we have Alderman Rainey.
No, oh, I have no additional reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Human Services Committee asks your approval of H1 Township of Evanston, June 2010 monthly bills. The Township of Evanston Supervisor recommends that the city council approve the Township of Evanston bills, payroll, and medical payments for the month of June 2010 in the amount of $283,927.80. Second.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Well, you can explain. I do.
Have any questions? Alderman Rainey?
Yes, I'm really embarrassed that I've lost the sheet. The executive director made a $100,000 correction, and I just didn't understand it. I'm not challenging it, I just would like it explained.
Okay. First, I'd like to apologize for Ms. Vance's presence, not being here tonight. She had made previous arrangements, vacation arrangements, that could not be canceled without it being a huge financial debt to her, so I would like to stress that apology on her behalf, not being present for the intro of the budget. The, in reference to the monthly bills list, the amount is actually $185,753.80. There was an error in issuing our contractual service agreements under the town fund. When the contracts were being processed, our accountant looked at the total quarterly amount instead of the joint individual amounts between the township and the City of Evanston Mental Health Board. So that made a huge reduction in the bills of the $100,000 that is being questioned.
Were there, were there any overpayments ever made?
No.
No.
All of those checks were voided before they were even issued out.
So the total bills for this month under the township is, I mean, the yellow agenda has not been corrected.
Is $185,753.80.
Is that what you read, Alderman?
No.
Close to 98. It's, it's one, it's been changed to $185,753.80.
And was this the first time this person ever did this work?
No, it's not. It was just a mental error, and looking at the, the way the contract was written out, and it was an oversight, and it was called by management, and we rectified the problem.
Yeah, that's, I guess.
I move we accept the correction.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Paty's.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Nine to zero. Thank you.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
This completes my report, Madam Mayor.
Next, we have Alderman Rainey.
No, oh, I have no additional reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Human Services Committee asks your approval of H1 Township of Evanston, June 2010 monthly bills. The Township of Evanston Supervisor recommends that the city council approve the Township of Evanston bills, payroll, and medical payments for the month of June 2010 in the amount of $283,927.80. Second. Move approval. Second.
Okay. Well, you can explain. I do.
Have any questions? Alderman Rainey?
Yes, I'm really embarrassed that I've lost the sheet. The executive director made a $100,000 correction, and I just didn't understand it. I'm not challenging it, I just would like it explained.
Okay. First, I'd like to apologize for Ms. Vance's presence, not being here tonight. She had made previous arrangements, vacation arrangements, that could not be canceled without it being a huge financial debt to her, so I would like to stress that apology on her behalf, not being present for the intro of the budget. The, in reference to the monthly bills list, the amount is actually $185,753.80. There was an error in issuing our contractual service agreements under the town fund. When the contracts were being processed, our accountant looked at the total quarterly amount instead of the joint individual amounts between the township and the City of Evanston Mental Health Board. So that made a huge reduction in the bills of the $100,000 that is being questioned.
Were there, were there any overpayments ever made?
No.
No.
All of those checks were voided before they were even issued out.
So the total bills for this month under the township is, I mean, the yellow agenda has not been corrected.
Is $185,753.80. Seven hundred and fifty-three eighty.
Is that what you read, Alderman?
No. Close to 98.
It's, it's one, it's been changed to $185,753.80. I.
And was this the first time this person ever did this work?
No, it's not. It was just a mental error, and looking at the, the way the contract was written out, and it was an oversight, and it was called by management, and we rectified the problem.
Yeah, that's, I guess.
I move we accept the correction.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Paty's.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye, thanks.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
I guess that would be me. With regard to O2, I'd like to move for introduction of Ordinance 45-0, I shouldn't say O, -10, granting an extension until July 14, 2015 of the electric ordinance to Commonwealth Edison. The electric franchise negotiating team is recommending approval of this ordinance, granting a five-year extension of the 1957 electric franchise agreement with ComEd until July 14, 2015. In addition to the, a five-year option, which would be a unilateral option that the city could undertake to increase that term for an additional five years, and again, that would be unilateral at the city's sole discretion. Prior terms, if you had an opportunity to review the materials, would go from time to time. Most recent renewals were for three-year terms, but the Energy Commission is recommending the five-year term, which was negotiated with ComEd, and I think that was negotiated down from a requested 20-year term from ComEd.
So you're moving introduction?
Moving introduction, and I'd like to suspend the rules if we have it introduced.
Sorry, thank you, Wally, to introduce the ComEd franchise, and seeing no further lights to discuss it, City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote? For introduction? All right. You don't want to vote?
No, for introduction.
Yeah, for introduction.
It's just a voice vote.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to move to suspend the rules. The existing contract expires in two days, July 14, 2010, and therefore, I would like to move to suspend the rules so we can get this passed. There was, in spite of some extensive, extensive discussion, no other alternatives less than five years that ComEd was willing to offer in the negotiations, and again, in view of the fact that our Energy Commission has made this recommendation, and the negotiating team was able to achieve these, these terms, which I think are very favorable. And the danger, I shouldn't say danger, but perhaps danger, we might face if we have either a shorter term or we don't have the five-year option, is that if ComEd comes back in a shorter period of time, they may ask to eliminate a lot of the things, a lot of the things that we're presently getting. And if that happens, we may end up in a situation where we're getting less than what we're getting now. So I think by getting this five-year term with the unilateral option for an additional five years on our present term.
Oh, that's been moved and seconded, Alderman Holmes.
I just, I guess to Alderman Wilson, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Wilson, under the additional programs and improvements, under Program 7, the Economic Development Initiative, I'm talking about the substation at Church Brown. It's on page, I don't know, 310 of 316, if you're looking online. I just want to know if that's really going to happen. I mean, is that signed, sealed, and delivered in this, in this proposal? Because when I read it, of course, we've been trying to get that done for about, what, five years now, Dennis? So I'm just wanting to know where.
Right, well, it's, it's what they've agreed to, and it's what they're willing to put in writing, and, and this has met with, with ComEd's approval, and so those are the terms that they're locking themselves into.
Okay, because it's really important for the West Side, only because parking, and if we're going to do economic development over there, we really do have to have some parking, so it's a really important piece for us.
Right.
Fantastic.
Understood?
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, it's, seeing no further lights, it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. City Clerk?
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Paty's.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Okay, to one, it needs to be a unanimous vote, so the motion fails. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I, I don't want to take advantage of your good nature, but I do want to make a statement that when this comes before the council, I intend to argue for a three-year term. I found it rather surprising, the timidity of those of us negotiating.
And, and this, to me, this is the least of all of it, but I'm, I'm just mentioning it to you. One of the arguments we had at negotiating was you don't, you don't disperse your help in an efficient manner when things are going wrong. In other words, if something happens in Naperville or some other suburb, everybody goes there to fix it. So then if something happens here, there's nobody left. It's not like Mabus with the fire department, where all the trucks are at the fire on Judson the other day. All the trucks come in from all the other communities to watch over us while we put out the fire. That's not the way Commonwealth Edison. Everybody goes, you have to wait. So, I had twelve families out on the previous storm. They were out for over forty-eight hours, forty-eight hours. When they finally got somebody over to take a look at the problem, it took fifteen minutes to fix. It was the most minor of problems. Fifteen minutes for their person to fix. So, it's not a good way to distribute assistance to communities with outages. I know we want to be their friend, and that was the whole approach we took at negotiating. We want to be Commonwealth Edison's friend. We don't want to do anything to upset them. We want to make sure that they keep giving us the, the free stuff that they give us, which are, the customers are paying for, by the way. So, I'm going to argue that the most we should do is offer them a three-year extension, and, and I will go, I will go for an additional two years after that. I, I don't like the idea of going five years. Read in the Tribune over the weekend, I'm sure you all did too, about the coal-powered plant mess that Naperville got involved in. Utilities, they signed a twenty-year contract, they're up a creek. This, this company is a distribution system, and their distribution system has some problems. And I think they would probably argue, oh, it doesn't matter whether you had a twenty-year contract or a five-year contract, or a three-year contract. If it breaks down, we'll fix it. We have been keeping them at the table, talking to them all along. I know the current representative from Commonwealth Edison finds that to be a little inconvenient. But the FaceTime is what got us to the point we were at prior to the Fourth of July. It's a public utility, it's supposed to be providing a service to the public, and there is weather. And I don't think that weather should be the reason why we don't have power a lot of the times. And that's, that's, that's the bottom line. We need to keep a three-year contract, we need to keep them talking. And I know Commonwealth Edison would like us a lot more if we gave them five, but I'm going to ask you for three at our next meeting. And I wish you would all think about it. And I think you should talk to your, I'm sure we haven't talked to our constituents about this agreement. Ask your constituents, I'll go along with it. If your constituents say, yes, let's do it, let's go five years, they're much improved, then we should do it. But I think you really need to talk to your constituents.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
And as everyone, I'm sure, would expect, I disagree with a very significant portion of Alderman Rainey's characterizations. And this isn't about being their friends, it's about locking in terms that we want to lock ComEd into for a period of time that, that I and the Energy Commission felt comfortable with. So, these are terms that we want, and we want as a, as a city. But setting those issues aside, the ordinance will expire in two days, which is well before the next city council meeting. So, I would move that, to introduce an identical ordinance for a period of sixty days, if council is, advises me that that is legal to do so. Move that we introduce adoption of a, of, of a sixty-day extension to enable us to get through these issues. And then I would move to suspend the rules if, if the team is willing to introduce such an ordinance.
We need two weeks, we don't need sixty days.
Thirty days then.
We need two weeks.
If we don't have it resolved at the next council meeting, we'll be in the same position, so thirty days.
We have nine people voting, it'll be resolved.
Thirty days, okay, thank you.
Mr. Farrar, did you want to speak to that?
Just, just for purposes of clarity, the only thing I would be concerned about is the extension of thirty days with, with only one council meeting for August ninth, that whatever longer extension the council would be prepared to act upon, that the council would need to be prepared to suspend the rules and act at that point as well. That's, that's just my one concern for purposes of housekeeping. Other than that, a thirty-day extension can be passed. We'll make the proper interlineation on the ordinance forty-five and give it the thirty days.
Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I, and members of the council, please, please, there's no need to go, we're going to handle this. There, there's nothing different in this than any other ordinance that we pass. Let's do it at our next council meeting, this is introduced. We'll handle it at our next council meeting. There are nine of us, we can make a decision. I've lost a million times, I've won a million times. All you do is count, you know? If it's eight to one, it's eight to one, maybe I'll prevail, I don't know. But there's no need to drag this out. I, I don't know your point, I mean, it's not the way we do business.
Alderman Wilson?
All right, thank you. If the ordinance as proposed is not approved, Alderman Rainey, you've indicated you want to authorize a three-year with a two-year option. However, ComEd hasn't offered that, so that's not on the table. So, we are going to need additional time if this particular ordinance isn't approved. So, you know, we're going to find ourselves, if it's not approved, I, I suggest sixty days, it gives us enough time, whatever the contingencies are, to get it covered.
Madam...
So I've revised my motion for a sixty-day extension.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
All we doing is extending the existing agreement, right? That's what we doing. You proposing, you proposed sixty days initially. You won't go back, you went back to thirty days, you want to go back to sixty days? I'm trying to get clear on...
I think sixty days would be more appropriate in the event that we have to do any additional negotiating with ComEd. Hopefully, we won't, but if we do, we're going to need additional time to make those negotiations.
I'll second that.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded that we extend the existing contract for sixty days. Is that an ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I would move to suspend the rules with regard to the introduction of that sixty-day suspension ordinance.
Been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey.
Yes, I'll do it.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Thank you. Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
I would like to move to adopt the sixty-day extension ordinance.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the sixty-day extension ordinance. City clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, we have a sixty-day extension.
Thank you.
That brings us to call of the wards, Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is this, yeah. Tomorrow night, we're having a meeting, as I mentioned earlier, on speed humps, NSP two, foreclosed properties in the Eighth Ward's, NSP two census tract, and police issues and crime issues. On Wednesday, on Wednesday, there is a meeting of the Barton, Brummel, Oakton, Austin Neighborhood Group over at the Levy Center. Alderman Burris and I will be there. And then on Thursday night, the very first meeting of the Howard Street New Business District. And all of the, all of the businesses have been solicited east of Ridge Avenue. And I must say, working with Johanna Niden has been just a pleasure. And so, anyway, I'm not going to say anymore about comments made tonight because they were just so outrageous and so off-point. But I will make a statement tomorrow night. The chief of police will be there, Sarah Flex will be there. Detectives and narcotics people will be there tomorrow night. And I will be there tomorrow night. So, look forward to seeing anybody who wants to show up.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris?
Thank you, as Alderman Rainey said, we have a meeting, a joint meeting about Neighborhood Watch on Wednesday night. I also wanted to let everyone know, I've hired two more interns for the summer. Once again, out of no one else's pocket but my own, so no taxpayer dollars here. One of the interns, Levi Mealy, who's also a Northwestern student, will be focusing on putting together Neighborhood Watch programs in the ward. I'll be working very closely with the police department. The other intern is Jordan Bachelor, and she'll be working on establishing a communications committee and working to take over for my current intern, Chris Lee, who will be leaving at, on September first. And Jordan will be taking over responsibilities for website, the E newsletter. And more about their responsibilities will be coming out on, in my July electronic newsletter. Please sign up for that if you have not. We have about a thousand people subscribe to the newsletter, and we would like to have more. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. You announced earlier the passing of Ray Summers. Ray was also the president of Ask Me for a period of time. And whether or not we agreed with Ray's position on whatever issue he was articulating, he walked up here and delivered those positions with great confidence. Ray had been my neighbor for a couple of years and had, you know, really appreciate his presence in the neighborhood. And, you know, he started taking some initiatives in trying to make sure that we have a very good and safe neighborhood. He had been suffering for a while. And even during his last days, you know, you call Ray on his cell phone, he responds Summers, you know, with just, he projects a, a great sense of, you know, presence. His family has been around him, his friends, and I think that what they've indicated is that he died very peacefully. So, as far as I understand, I had spoken to his son earlier, who indicated that the services will be held at Thompson's Funeral Home, the initial, I guess, part of the wake on Thursday from one to three, from one o'clock will be the wake. And then, indicated Second Baptist, that's where the final services, religious services will be held. So, I'm sure that Dar will circulate more information. But in the meantime, please hold the family in your prayers. And that's my report, Madam.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. First of all, I do want to extend my personal thanks and gratitude to Alderman Jean Baptiste, Alderman Rainey, the mayor, the city staff, and all the individuals who did such a fantastic job after the, after the fire at the YMCA. I happened to be out of town that day, so I was reassured and very comfortable knowing that so many people were working so hard to take care of my constituents, and I do greatly appreciate that. And the reason I was out of town, it was for a happy occasion personally, and I'll disclose my personal interest in this. My son Benjamin is on the baseball team, I'm going to mention, but the Evanston U-12 baseball team traveled to Cooperstown, New York, to the Dreams Park for a baseball tournament. And they went six and one, which I understand is the best record an Evanston team has ever achieved at the, at this tournament. It's, there are, there were a hundred and four teams from around the country. And my perception was that the vast majority of those teams were groups of kids who were compiled from somewhat larger metropolitan areas, like a Chicago All-Star team, Texas All-Star teams. And our community team did very, very, very well against, against that level of competition. So congratulations, congratulations to all those young men.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen? Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
I thought the only thing I'd be missing if I was down here for the Fourth of July was the parade, but I wasn't, so. It was really a busy Fourth of July weekend. I would too like to express my sympathy, not only to the Summers family, but there were just so many deaths this past weekend, but to the Turner family, to the Spencer Davis family, and also to the Turner family, who, John Turner, who was the director, former director at Family Focus, passed away this weekend as well. I would also like to congratulate Family Focus because they have an elevator. And so, I know that it's been a long haul getting it, but the building is now completely accessible, so we're real excited about that. Would also like to just encourage everyone, especially the council members, to join us on July twenty-second at Fireman's Park at two o'clock in the afternoon as the rededication of the park will be done then. And I also want to say to the Fireman Park neighbors, because they have been fantastic. They've done lunches for the workers, they've just been out there and they've been really great. It's been a really wonderful community effort there. And last, Thursday night is our ward meeting at Fleetwood at seven. And we will be discussing NSP two, and Mr. Walker, and the community development, economic, community economic development staff will be there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to, first of all, thank Parks and Rec for the incredible job cleaning up after the Fourth of July parade. I know there was a city crew, but also a number of volunteers who stepped up this year and, and the, as far as I can remember, the city, the street has not been, Central Street has not been as well-maintained after a parade that I know of. So, thank you very much, thanks to Doug Gainer, thanks to all the staff that helped. Secondly, there's been a rash of car break-ins, car burglaries in the ward. I want to advise people to lock their cars at night. One resident who has broken into it just had her car detailed, so apparently the police got a really good pair, set of fingerprints. So, lock your cars and keep them clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just want to mention the, I want to mention the Central Street Sidewalk Sale this weekend, it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And thank you to the city council for the money that came through the Economic Development Committee for the Central Street Business Association. That money turned into a spot on Saturday's ABC Morning News promoting the Central Street Sidewalk Sale, thanks to the PR firm that was hired with that money, as well as a really great new brochure that they're distributing from the Central Street Business Association. So, the sidewalk sale is this weekend, please find your way there with cash.
Thank you very much. Alderman Wilson?
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, one-twenty slash two A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, real estate, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS one-twenty slash two, subsection C one, C five, C six, C eleven, and C twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
City clerk?
Alderman Rainey?
Yes, but could I say one more thing, and that is, the CERTS people over the holiday weekend were unbelievable. I don't think we can say it enough. These are volunteers who were at the Robert Crown Center until God knows what time, and then they were at the parade in the morning.
And when I told them how amazed I was at their work, they said it's a very, very rigorous training to be a CERT volunteer, and then they have to pass a quite difficult test.
And they pointed out several errors that some of us non, you know, CERT people were making.
I was grateful they didn't point out too many of mine.
They pointed out several things to Lionel and myself. So anyway, and I do approve of going into executive session, but the CERTS people... of going into executive session, but the CERTS people were fabulous.
We were telling the YMCA residents to help us carry the boxes.
We were telling people what...
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
John Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover, thank you.
Lionel, you really did... Someone more quite sick.